February 4th. We got.
Third edition.
What do I need to do?
You need to turn it on.
Uh, where's that at?
No, you, you got the, right there.
Oh, this? Oh, yeah, yeah. I start video.
Yep, and I mute.
Sorry, I was looking for the remote. And now.
I mute. There we go.
Sorry, I'll try to.
All right. Today we have the presence of the esteemed Jake Randi.
Sorry.
He is not by video, he is live. Jake, would you call us to order, please?
Yes, sir. Sorry, that one caught me off guard.
The esteemed.
Keisha John.
Here.
Hart Grammy.
Here.
Steve McCallum.
Here.
I'm not leaving. Trying to get the camera, going over a little bit.
Fine. Why, does, does, does Steve hear you?
Oh, yeah. There you go, okay.
Now Steve wants to get on video. Can you take him just tell?
Exactly.
He's down at the end, just saying, please put me in the video.
Smile, you're on candid camera, okay.
All right, we are, uh, starting with, um, round number three of our budget sessions. And, uh, leading on is Missy Popper, Director of Zoning. Missy?
Yes.
Welcome. What do you need? How much money?
So, as you can see, my budget, basically, except for, as directed, the 3% for salary increase, that's, that was the increase. So.
It's pretty, your budget's pretty.
Pretty tight.
Yeah, yeah.
It's staying forward.
It's, uh, not, there's not a lot of, and there was a reest- reestimated budget because when it was submitted last year, it changed after my review, so that does make, um, that line item of number one look strange, but that's because there was a.
Yep.
But, yeah, other than that.
So, Missy, did you, and, um, since you are now under, um,
111.
Yep, yep. You did put in a 3% then?
I did.
Okay, all right.
That was kind of the direction that we were given after the compensation board, so.
That's what I needed to know.
Missy, probably the only thing that, at least for you, is do you foresee any major expenses with code writing or code enforcement?
Um, so we do have, yes, I am working with, and, and as we discussed, and, and back in July, you guys, allowed me to sign a contract with Carla Fulch, Hopkins and Hugner. We had gotten into where we were using Snyder and Associates, and then car, or the, the recommendation was always to run it through the county attorney, which seemed a little redundant, so we, in July, switched to a planning and zoning attorney to cut out, number one, time, number one, cost and money from both the county attorney and, um, myself, so. Because in zoning, in the zoning world, we have timelines that have to be met, and we have to get answers, and so it just felt like that was the direction to go.
How much have you, how much have you put in for, for those services?
So, that line item is the planning and zoning, which a year ago, we raised that to 36.5. We thought there was going to be some potentially comp plan, uh, changes, that then, because of COVID, that project didn't move forward. I would ask that we just leave it at that. As of today, I think I've only used maybe 10,000 of it, so I, you know, I'm still trying to be conservative of that. Conservative with that money. So I've got Carla doing some research on, uh, a couple ordinances that may be problematic. I think we all, Carla did do a complete review of both our, uh, zoning and subdivision ordinance. You know, this last year's brought some challenges, uh, so we wanted to make sure that we can have as iron-tight an ordinance as we can. There's a couple areas that she's still researching, and when I get answers to those, I'll bring them to you before we move forward, but spending a lot of the time on ordinance updates that if we can't enforce them, there's no reason to have them in there. So, the other project that after talking with Bridgette and Tyler, that I'm working on with Carla and doing a lot of my own research is to bring forward a zoning district for Pershing. It's time to just move it forward, and so when I get that, we're, I'm working on doing some measurements, um, I've done some research with other counties and how they treated similar situations, and they'll indeed have their own zoning district. You know, nothing within our county is going to fit the mold of what a district or an incorporated area that's been in zone for 40 years. So, I'm working on that, that would go along with these other updates.
So, right now, when they have a, they come to us, right?
Nope.
So when they do a garage, or they do anything, they just?
Nope. So, that's become problematic, and, you know.
Do we have any others that are like that?
No.
Okay.
That we do not. And in talking with Tyler and Bridgette, we had, um, a meeting on some other stuff, we, they brought that up, and and we, you know, it's just time, we, we've got, Tyler's spent a lot of money down there on infrastructure, and, you know, obviously Bridgette's trying to get, you know, finish through with the septic, so it's time to move forward with it. So that's one of the things I'm going to bring forward to you. And, um, I, I can tell you this year has been, so I, I've done a spreadsheet, I don't know if you guys want it, you know, it is small, I, I try and squeeze all those together so we don't have multiple. This year, we did 172 building permits. 61 of those are new homes, that was over $4 million in, in new homes that were built in Earl County.
Say, okay, say that number again, 170, because I'm trying to follow where you're at.
Right, it's clear at the end, at the bottom.
Okay, right here.
172 building permits, 61 of those were homes. We had four rezonings, one subdivision, 10 variances and special use permits, four site plans, and 54 land divisions, which over the 20-year span is, um, the only year that we had 175 building permits and 124 new homes was when we still had around Pella, 2002, and they were doing Hunter's Ridge and Eagle Creek. So, other than that, this is pretty much an, an all-time high. So, it's been a very busy year. When you look at each one of those petitions, takes about a week to get ready for. It's, it's been hectic, um. Thank goodness, through the pandemic, I've said it before, but we are getting ready to also get the permits, our online permitting into the next platform, which will be easier for the public to use. I would say 90% of our permits are now coming, building permits are now coming in online, which is, is very beneficial to both myself and the public. That's just 90% less might be, you know, people that are coming in, so. Other projects, you know, we, we worked on, I, I got three projects cleaned up this year. We're also working on some big cleanup projects. We are also moving forward with the, um, river properties and getting those in compliance. I worked with Jeff a lot from March to November to get stuff ready for the 911 Cutover project, so it's been an extremely busy year.
Steve, Keisha, are there questions?
Um, Missy, I know that we've, uh, you know, myself, I've come to you and asked you to do some things, and I appreciate that, on the permits and, and with this, I think, um, when you bring up the permits with the website, I think that that will be beneficial with the change.
Correct, yes.
I, I do think that will help alleviate some of that, and, uh, so.
It was a great asset when Snyder listened and they put, you know, I can leave the message on my machine, and I do, if, you know, if I'm out of the office, to go to you, go to MarionCountyIA.org, select your parcel, and go to the Apply for Permit tab. It's very easy. I can say that before that was added with the, with the website, people didn't use it, um, they couldn't find it, so that's been a great asset, and it, it's, it's streamlined a lot. I know Bridgette, um, all of hers, she requires all of her septic's to be done online. Tyler's moving to that, that's why we're trying to get everybody to the next platform in, in the permitting.
Great.
So.
Great, yep, yep. I don't have anything.
Missy, what issues do you see coming up? I mean, aside from increasing workload, which is actually a good thing?
It is a good thing, yep, yep.
I mean, I know it's busy, I know it gets to be sometimes tentative chaos, especially if we're, I mean, we're not working on 2018.
And, and that has also brought, I will say, that that's barely been in effect for a little over a month, and we've got, they're going to finish developing Hunter's Ridge, so that's going to be coming forward, I'm assuming that they're going to be coming forward and want those roads, you know, the rest of those roads in Hunter's Ridge are county roads. And we've got at least potentially one other subdivision and a few more splits, so there's been some activities in that area that we now have jurisdiction. So how that's going to impact the workload, I can, I mean, obviously, we can see from when we had it before, it, it's going to increase the workload.
Are there any other areas I know that there's probably people submitting things online? I assume that that goes into that whole workflow process?
Correct, yes.
That, uh, we implemented several years ago?
Yes.
Still using that? Are there any other things from a system standpoint that we could do that would help make work more streamlined and efficient for you?
You know, there were times, I'm not going to lie, and I had talked to Lisa about this, and let her know that, um, when I'm trying to work on petitions, when I'm trying to work on site planning, sometimes I just have to put the phone on Do Not Disturb. Uh, it used to work a little more efficiently when, uh, sanitation and zoning were all in the same office, where one person's working on a project, somebody else was answering the phone. Now being the only person in there, it becomes.
Who is your backup?
I don't have one, so.
All right.
That becomes problematic, um, when you're, you know, that's, that's a discussion I'd love to have. I don't know, I've talked with other counties, they have basically people that are floaters that help in multiple departments. I would, I would love to have that conversation with you guys about what, what's the options, I mean, as far as, you know, we've talked about it before, and I understand that we, you know, try and keep it status quo as far as hiring, but there are, we get into the busy months where.
Sure.
What direction do you want me to take? I mean, basically, I put the phone on, like I said, Do Not Disturb, I still have to deal with it, so that means a lot of long days for me.
Do we have anybody right now in any of the courthouse departments? We've got that employee that's being shared between Akela and?
Assessor.
Assessor. Is there anybody else like that?
And that's what a lot of counties do do, they have to have a floater person.
Yeah, it makes sense, it makes sense, instead of having each department hire one person, when it's only maybe a 20% job, have that person help multiple departments and make it a, a more substantial job. Is there anybody like that in the departments right now that we do part-time or anything like that, that?
No, that was the.
We've, we've pretty much.
No?
We don't have any part-time administrative.
Yeah, so Carla and Missy neither have an assistant, so currently, so.
Well, let's, uh, let's think about that a little bit, Missy, and I think having somebody, well, there's several reasons for this, right? Number one, so the work continues, you're able to get to things, and if there's administrative stuff, you can have assistants, but the second thing is so you can take a vacation.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
I mean, I mean, you do take vacations, right?
You, you do, but you, and you shut, you, you just put someone on the door and tell them to stop by, what, Mike's or?
Um, I mean, I usually, when I'm gone, I let Lisa know, I let Mike know, and I let Jake's office know, and covers, if there's land division, Anne can cover that. Rezonings and stuff coming in, I just kind of have to schedule my vacations so that I can make sure that I can cover all the bases. Unfortunately, with pandemic this year, my trip to Mexico didn't happen, so here I am, but, um, it, it becomes difficult. There's a lot of seven to five days where, you know, you just keep your nose to the grindstone, but, um, so, yeah, if there could be some potential.
Well, let's just, let's just put, I'll, I'll make a mental, mental note to talk, but I'll even make a, I'll even make a written note to talk.
It would be greatly appreciated. You know, they are, and it is something that, you know, obviously, to have some assistance wouldn't be that they'd have to have all of the detailed zoning knowledge, I mean, to move, but even to process permits that are coming in, to, you know, answer basic questions. There's some basic stuff as, as far as the process. Kim used to do a little of that when she was here as well, and, and was still at the courthouse.
Sure.
Um, you know, our basic process of building permit, then you get an address, then you get a septic, and you get a driveway permit, I mean, you know, that's a lot of the basic questions. I'm not going to lie, there's building permits to get into some more detailed. The zoning world's like a lot of our jobs where, unfortunately, there's never, there's a lot of times there's not a cut and dry answer. It's, uh, okay, well, let's do some research, and, um, I research a lot with other counties, you know, a lot of other ordinances, so to come up with a plan, I said, we're, you know, I know Keisha and I talk a lot about different, you know, the code enforcement and stuff, um, and I know this is with Bridgette as well, you know, a lot of times her and I work together on those. When rezonings come in, they have a timeline, and we have a certain amount of time to get them done, so unfortunately, then sometimes some of these other things that aren't on a clock, they have to take it back for an hour because you, there's only so many hours.
Sure.
So.
All right. Very good. No, I made a note, we'll have a think about that. I know we talked about it before. I, I, I always get, like, should business stop? Should business stop when our public might leave? Should at least get some, I, I don't expect someone to come in with your level of expertise, but at a minimum, that can keep the process going. So, let's, let's talk about that.
Okay.
Okay? Any other questions for Missy? Steve? Keisha?
I don't.
No, I'm good.
Very good. Missy, any, any final thoughts before you get to go back out in the snow, the wind, the cold, and some Mexico? I'm sorry?
I know, I know. We almost booked it in November, and then we were scared what might happen, and I'm glad we didn't, but.
Yeah.
There's always mistakes.
That's right.
Very, thank you.
Thank you, Missy, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Who's, uh, who's next?
I think it's me.
Is it you? Okay. I don't have it wrote down in front of me, so.
And Carla is on.
Then Carla, and then Jake.
Carla is on a call from 1 to 2. And she can leave once, unless she wanted you first? Or maybe Jake can go ahead of her?
Yeah, we're flexible, I mean, whatever you guys need.
Are you, are you ready, Jake? I mean, I don't want to.
I mean, I can go next.
I don't have a PowerPoint like Tyler, but, yeah, we can sure talk about mine, that's fine.
I can go.
I mean, I didn't know if you guys wanted to talk about any other one of yours, or 99, or anything like that, or?
He tried to pong it off, see, doesn't.
No, no, no.
If he wants us to talk about our department.
Between you two, which one wants to go first?
I'll go, because I was going to ask Jeff to come in for the safety part of it.
That's fine.
Is that okay?
It's okay with Jake.
Let's kind of hold this area in. This is my area.
Hi, Jeff, it's your turn.
You're trying to.
All right, so who's going first, Lisa? Are you going first?
Yep, we, um.
Or you want to talk safety?
We, can we talk safety? Jeff's on, Jeff's been on a, um, training, and so he was going to take some time out.
Do we have a tab specifically for that, or?
It's in, um, 14, Department 14, and it's the 20,000.
Okay.
Ask. We, we kept it at 20,000.
Yep. Yep. So how have we been doing overall?
Well.
I have not, I've not heard that work comp mods are dramatically changing, so. Or is that, are you just kind of with bad news?
Yeah, but I can.
Good.
Do you have it, or you can?
$17,000.
Huh?
$17,000 reduction in work comp.
And the premium. So we are now, we were at, our mod rate was .85, and, um, now is going to be .79.
So, did we finally roll those, those bad years off? Jeff, where now we're getting, we're getting more benefit from increased safety programs?
Yep.
Okay. Excellent.
And then our.
Lisa, what have we brought it, I mean, give me a, or maybe Jeff, maybe you remember, from when I started, how far has this come down? Couple hundred thousand, I think.
I think right here.
I wouldn't have it eight years ago.
Because I still remember the first time you get, we all mad.
Our premiums paid, when did you come off?
12. Jake, when did it come on? It feels like forever ago.
Okay, so.
Eight years ago.
11, 11, 12, actual premium paid. Not estimated, actual 220,370.
What are we at now, then?
Our projected, um, it's 79,000. What's our, what's our projected, our estimated is Our lowest year was in 1819, we had, we paid 78,000. 1916, so, but, but we started at 220, and if you remember, when you came in, they were, they weren't happy with our.
We had lots of our initial conversations about kicking us out. We had lots of discussions with claims people, didn't we?
Exactly, yes. Yeah, so.
That's excellent. Well, both of you, both of you and our department heads who have embraced the safety philosophy, the things that we put in place, and you two have been the drivers of that with the Safety Committee, and Tyler and everybody else, Jason, who are doing these things, that's, that's a.
That's a great job.
That is a great job. That is a great job.
We both feel like we have to give a lot of credit this past year, since COVID started, to the department heads. They've kept our safety record intact. We have not had safety meetings with them, so they're doing this from the previous guidance and, and the previous education. I was discussing with Lisa yesterday, and we have a, because of backlog and the things that we haven't done in the last 10 months, we have a backlog of things that we need to accomplish, and we need to get caught up on. So, there, there's going to be significant activity here coming very quickly. We have not had the safety consultant down here in probably two years.
More than that.
More than that, because we've been out here, we've been out here for three, and he hasn't been here since we moved out here. So we've got some things we need to catch up on, um, that are going to be a little bit painful for us, um.
I thought they were here.
Insurance was.
Oh, insurance.
I count.
She was here yesterday.
Yeah.
They have a lot of moving parts on, so, yes.
How, how did that go back?
I thought it went very well. Jake?
We'll find out.
Yeah.
She, she continued with her push from last year about background checks, um, on, on everybody. And, um, yeah, new, new hires on, on, across the board, um.
Do we not do background checks?
No, we never have any.
She continued.
That'll be okay.
Driver's license, check your driver's license, license records annually.
Yep. Yeah.
But we took her through the courthouse, um, tried to offer her some low-hanging fruit, if you will, there, and, um, I felt like we stayed out of any train wreck situations with her, so I'm not terribly concerned about what written recommendation might come. I suspect it'll be.
It'll be policies.
It'll, it'll be policy-related stuff.
Good. When? I'll, I'll wait to see what I can, what they come back, any, did they give you an ETA?
On the written recommendation?
Yeah.
Usually, I, I usually get it within a week or two.
So, on the employment side, the, the background checks, those. When they talk about driver's licenses, Jeff, what are, what are they, what are they getting at?
Basically making sure that I haven't had a suspended license in the last year and didn't, and failed to report it to my employer.
Okay.
Making sure that I haven't racked, excuse me, racked up a bunch of violations since you last checked.
Isn't our insurance?
And that would only be for those who drive, right? That would not be for employers.
I would assume.
That's the way I would lean.
And I, I would.
I don't know what right we have to lean into an employee's personal life that doesn't drive a vehicle for us, doesn't claim mileage.
Well, that's it. If they claim mileage,
Yes.
whether their personal vehicle or they're driving cars, I think, yes, you would, but then.
I think the answer is yes, anytime you have an employee that's claiming mileage on a regular basis. Certain, and, and there are even situations, you know, you might have the one-off employee who goes to a conference.
Right.
And that's the only time they're, well, that would be different than the employee who consistently is mileage reimbursed, we can't. Because in most companies, that's what they do, they check their driving, and that's what I do, I check all my employees' driving. We still do that. So, and if somebody would have an issue, I mean, you have employees self-report. Have, you know, self-report.
And, and.
It's a bad day.
And all of this, all the recommendations will come through the board. It's, it, you know, we won't, it's not to, for us to decide, it's, it's, you know, the policy changes or anything would be brought before you.
Right.
Before anything.
No, I got it.
Yeah.
I got it.
So along those lines, she was, she was not prepared for us yesterday. She hadn't, didn't really remember what she signed this for two years ago, or what she recommended two years ago. So she was unprepared for the meeting, which gave us some skating room, if you will, but we, we discussed going forward, that whatever she recommends to us in writing, we're going to give it to you, and so that we can follow up with her questions on our next visit, we, we will just have to work with you and get that loop closure. If, if you say, we, as an order, not going to, we're not going to do that, that's fine. Just so we can cite maybe the background, why you're not going to do it, or how else, another avenue that you're going to choose to address the issue, just so we have that loop closure.
Yep.
At a party.
Yep. We, we did talk about out of the box. If we could think of a, a, you know, normally we do a meal. We do feel it's time that we do the, um.
Catered lunch.
Catered lunch with training. We'd like to do it with training and then education about how the work comp premiums go into play. Again, it's been some time since we've done that. That seemed to really hit home with people. The last time we did it, and it's been, I mean, that was several years ago that that came about, and we have a lot of new employees since then, so we were trying to come up with the idea of how we could still do that, social distance, and educate and train.
How many people you thinking?
Thank you to the employees, obviously. We even discussed having a caterer provide somebody meals to on, say, three consecutive days, so we're not all gathering in one spot. If we can do a training presentation via PowerPoint remotely, we, we could still offer it three days in a row, instead of having everybody in one setting like we did at Dyer Heads on that last time.
As I say, that, or Extension Office with their gymnasium, you can do, I mean, you've got tables and chairs, it's plenty big there. Let me know if you need to, you know.
The only problem there is going to be parking.
I think it's important.
You've got the church, you've got the, you could, you could, you know, oftentimes, we check with church.
Okay.
Yeah, it's during the day, it's.
I think it's important that the employees know the importance of the work comp on how it affects the bottom line.
Yeah.
You know, it's a lot easier to give a raise when you've got some money sitting around that's not going someplace else. I mean, they need to understand the importance. I mean, they need to understand the importance of that, and I think most of them do now, but you said, like, you said we got a lot of new ones.
We got a lot of new ones, I was shocked at the, the last time we did it, the people that came up to me afterward, or saw me on the street and said something, and I'm like, oh my gosh, you did get my presentation, you know, and.
Yeah, I'm, you know, and we're going to be limited on how big of largest size we can have anyways, I mean, COVID, until COVID comes, you know.
We're not talking next month, we're just, we're just trying to think ahead that what, what can we do?
I agree.
I feel like we have to find a way to get it done this year, we talked about it last year, and with COVID, we didn't do it, but I really feel like we need to find a way to.
Even at Cordova. Even at Cordova.
We, we could use direheads and get everybody in there if we chose to do that, I'm, I'm just not sure that that's what we want to do. Uh, we always run into the courthouse offices, you know, they can't shut down, so we end up trying to, uh, provide a situation where they can split their lunch, their staff on, on lunchtimes. So if we offer catering over a couple of days, that would help address that.
Yep, I agree. It's American.
Maybe you want.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. It is, yeah. Okay, very good, Jeff, anything else to add? I think we should have the lunch somewhere.
Yeah, I agree, whatever, yeah, whatever you think, I mean, I think we have many options that we could probably use.
Absolutely.
And as always, like we've done the last time that we did these lunches, we'll extend the invitation to all three of you to come, if you want to say a few words and thank them for seventeen thousand.
Yep.
Yep.
That's, that's on them, and I think it means a lot to them to hear it from you, that it, it does mean something. It's not just the two talking heads here preaching, preaching safety.
No, I think that'd be good. Excellent.
Great.
All right, very good, Jeff, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, thanks.
Lisa, thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. Lisa, your line item that's, um, for assistance, um, regarding, and not employee, but like HR assistants, attorney assistants, is that, what is, where is that?
That is the, what I typically use for Allers and Cooney, not Allers and Cooney, excuse me, Hopkins.
Yep, I know, but where, what line item is that, is that?
Um, four twenty nine fourteen.
Okay.
That's ten thousand.
Yep, okay.
Um, and the current fiscal line.
You're over. Are you, uh, I mean, are you good with that? I mean, I guess.
Well, my thinking is, the only increase that I, I really have in my budget is moving the admin position over from your budget to mine. That was the only major increase I had, um, that came along with sick leave, no, no, it didn't, no, it didn't, sorry, so just that line item. So I've got fifty thousand in there for.
Oh, I see what you're doing, okay, yep.
And then, so.
Case if you have.
I probably do have, some years I use it, some years I don't, it, it's, that's one of the guessing games of, it's, it's hard to know.
Yep. Yeah, it is, it's, it's very much a, this.
It is, it really.
I mean, the only thing is, is I, you know, depending upon where you're at and how you finish out this year and what your projection is for the next year, for the next, next budget cycle, you may have to, you know, reevaluate that.
So Lisa, uh, how much did you put, put in for legal?
I have ten thousand.
Yeah, that's it, yeah. It's the second page right here.
There's some, because like, the line says legal fees, I keep, I was staring at it.
Oh, legal fees, I don't, that's not the one, I use it for planning and management is what it's under, I'm sorry.
Ah, that's all right.
So that's where the, the.
That's where.
That's where I was going, I was like, I wanted to make sure that I.
Yeah, so you just, yeah, leave it at ten thousand, if you go over, you go over.
And, and I know that.
Adjust it for.
I know that I'm, I'm high in one area on the, the salary, we posted it for forty, so, um, but, yeah, I can't look at my crystal ball and see how many.
Right.
Hopefully we'll have none, um, but, yeah.
Okay.
Nope.
It's pretty straightforward.
It is.
It is very.
Pretty, uh, lean.
Steve, Keisha, any, any questions for Lisa?
I don't, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, why is your revenue sheet blank?
I rely, I rely on Steve Edwards to, uh, generate the income to cover me.
Wow, Steve's got a lot of people hanging out, you know.
Steve's has chosen one, so, can we make, can you fill some more cabins so you can make us more money?
All right.
No, I'm, I'm.
All right, very good. All right, Lisa, thank you.
You're welcome, I don't really know if you want to know anything else.
No.
Do you want to, yeah, okay, yeah, so Carla has a Zoom you said from one to two, or two to three?
One to two.
Jake, are you ready?
Sure.
I want to talk about some other stuff until.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's up to you if you want, how you guys want to play it, that's fine, I don't know what's.
I don't know if you want to fit her in for twenty minutes, and then she's, or, you could get down.
She's down in her Zoom right now?
No.
I don't believe so, you want me to go see?
Yeah, let's see, she's ready.
As I say, if we can get her done, that way.
It shouldn't take that long.
Okay.
Yeah, then we can go home.
We get down early, yeah, it's gotten better.
I'm gonna push now.
Development, let's see, one, three, four.
Sixty three.
I'm so glad you know all these numbers.
There's a.
Oh, it's in the front, that's right. I'd look at that.
She has to be out like here at one.
Yeah.
Mine took five minutes, so.
Yeah, it won't be.
And I rang down the hall, so just so I'd see you know I got my stuff.
We won't keep you passed.
Okay, because I moved that meeting from Friday, from the other budget meeting, and so.
You're good.
And I'm in charge of this meeting, so I can't really.
Nope, I got it.
I gotta start the Teams meeting, otherwise nobody can get on.
All right.
Carla. Very good. So we've got some, uh, major reductions.
Yep.
Of course, in the salary line, because now it's just you.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, give me, give me a sense of major projects, what, what do we put in, we, we always have.
And that was the line item I had some questions about, I put fifteen thousand in there, um, I'm not sure, that's one line item that I think that the projects may need to be upped, uh, but not knowing exactly right now what's going to come through. We still have some funding left in this year, and I'm going to try to get the placemaking contract put into place this year. My hope is that I can get it all paid for in this fiscal year, um, there is the potential that, depending on timing of that, I don't like to pay payments until products are delivered. So I, that's the one project I am questioning about, and the other aspect is, once we get through the targeted business analysis, there may be some things that we need or that we need to do as, as a result of what we've learned. So those are two things that, I put fifteen thousand in there, could we use more in that line item? Yes. I think fifteen thousand is the minimum of what we probably need for some of the projects we will have going on next year. It would be nicer if we had more flexibility in there, um, knowing that if we don't need it, it would just sit there. So that's probably the one line item that I struggled with the most in part is crafting the budget.
What projects are we talking about? What are the projects?
The projects would, would be first, the follow up from the targeted industry analysis, the economic gardening program that we're piloting this year, that would be phase two of the pilot, because that would start in twenty twenty two, so there'd be six months of that pilot. There would also be any other follow ups to any of our other projects, like I said, it could be the placemaking project, it could be several of the other projects. We're working on a couple of things, um, in workforce development, that we're not yet molded into what we know what it's going to be, but there's a couple of other things that could fall in there.
You only, you put yourself down as a two percent?
Well, that was the cost of living, so I just pared that over, um, I realize the salary study that you were going to do was not done, um, I can give you the figures if you want them. As far as, um, our comparison, uh, we are very much under the other EDOs or other counties. I guess I get tired of battling with that line item, so I just put two percent in there.
Okay.
It's nowhere near what market is for this position.
It's kind of all over the map. Do they all do the same thing? They don't all do the same thing?
No, the more comparable is down below with the PDI survey, that is economic developers, um, that is both public and private, but it gives you a sense, because I think over half of our membership is, is organized to survey county. It's more, um, comparable, because in some counties, the EDO will be doing zoning, some counties are doing some community stuff, they're not all cut, and like.
Compatibles, yeah.
Winnebago and, one of the, two of the W's share a person.
Yeah.
So there's some differences there. And I, I think Jasper contracts, I'm not sure he's an employee.
Mahaska and Scotts are the ones that are really bringing that up too, yeah, so.
And Mahaska just does, um, just does employer call kind of business recruitment, doesn't do anything else.
So, so Carla, I guess I'd ask this question, we've had this discussion before on salary and competitiveness. How would we determine the success of an EDO position in order to have more money attached to it? I mean, what would be the metrics used? It, it can't be, this is, this is how I view, and you, you and I have talked about economic development a lot in over eight years, but wouldn't a com, wouldn't a component of it be, um, new businesses recruited, um, increase in jobs, increase in prop housing, I mean, wouldn't it be those things? It wouldn't just be, we do trade shows, right? It would, it would have to be more than that.
But some things are not within our control, I don't hire people, businesses hire people.
Yeah, but, but that's not what I'm saying, I mean, business recruitment is not the same thing as that.
No.
And, and going out and forming coalitions to actually actively recruit employers, which we desperately need in Marion County.
But wasn't part of our work plan, so it's, it's hard to be held to something that wasn't part of what we were.
I'm not asking, I'm not, I'm not holding anybody to that, I'm asking you, wouldn't that be a component?
It could be.
In order to attach.
As well as.
To a position, it's got to have value.
As well as increased traveler expenditures and other metrics too, that, that are in the realm of what we're working on. Because you can see the, the drastic increase years back from when we started doing traveler promotions, our traveler expenditure line was like that, and we've been able to increase that line and continue to grow traveler expenditures. Um, I think also you have to look at the planning that we're doing, which then results in projects. The planning itself is our component, our contribution, that results in, like I'm just working with right now with Pellicorp and the old work systems of, of New Horizons, having a new childcare center. I'm not doing the new childcare center, but it was our study that helped get that started.
Sure.
So we do a lot of those kinds of things that are what I would call indirect impacts. The ultimate impact does happen, but we are not the ones necessarily creating the new childcare center. We're doing this study that gives the data that helps them get, and we get them together.
Right.
And that results in, same with the housing study, we collected the data, got people together, people then went out and did things.
Yeah.
So part of what we're doing is creating activity to address needs.
What's my ass account getting for a hundred thousand dollars?
I just looked at that number going.
Yeah, well.
I won't comment.
Yeah, so I, and I, we battled with this a lot, um, this is, this has been something, it's no different than us sitting here in this position. I mean, you know, it varies depending upon, you know, there's some supervisors that make more and there's others, um, and we all know that there's positions that we've dealt with, you know, other department heads that, uh, you know. It, it is a struggle because we only have so much money. Um, I, I think if anybody, you know, we'd love to be able to pay market, but we're not market, we're, we're county, we're, you know, we only, we taxpayers are, that's, that's the struggle that we deal with.
And the struggle we deal with is one person departments, when, in the past supervisors have said across the board one percent or across the board two percent, and you're a one person department, that is just the maximum of your salary increase. Where in people that have twenty people departments, they have flexibility.
Sure.
And we do not, when you're in a one person department.
We had that argument yesterday.
Yeah.
You and I.
And, and, you know, and, and that's not in any, and you weren't there during those periods of time, but some of us who are long term, and those are the people that it's hurt the worst as far as salary being out of whack, have been the people that have lived through that. You know, because our salaries have not market adjusted, because there's never been turnover, so turnover becomes actually a detriment to the employee.
Well, and it, this is what also I see is, is, um, we come to a point where you're going to cap, and then it's just a three percent, I mean, that's what we're facing in a lot of these positions. You know, longevity, you may have somebody that's been here twenty five years, and you may have somebody that's been here three years, and they're the same, and, and there's a little bit of a rub there, because, but I also see it, you know, in, on the private too. Whereas, you know, within three to six years, most of these people are capped, you know, depending upon their job, I mean, and then they, some people move on and, and take a, a different job, and I get that, um.
But what we've seen over the years too, is that department head positions, especially the non-elected ones, sometimes are other positions, they come open, and then all of a sudden, to get somebody in that position, that salary eventually has to be so much higher, where the person who's been in a position long term doesn't ever get that market increase bump. I do have a couple of things that I really need to talk to you about, and we only have ten minutes.
Okay.
I'll talk fast. One is the question about, I did not put anything in my website as far as if you want to do the phase two conversion of our two websites into the county site.
Okay.
Because I felt like that then should go under IT, those expenses versus my department, because it would be in the county website. So that is not included in my budget, that's a question for Andrew, and that's a question for you, if you want to do that, we're more than happy to do that, but that dollar figure is not in my budget, so I just want you to know that.
Yep, that's fine, okay.
I did keep in there our amount to host, so.
Twenty five hundred, yep, yep, okay.
That's our amount to host and do changes for the year, just operating as normal, so that was just a point of content, or point of clarification.
Okay.
We talked about the placemaking, um, and the timing of that, um. The other thing I will bring you up to date on, the EVV, uh, folks from the MPO will be on the agenda for the February twenty third meeting, which that is the phase one kind of coming to you for the resolution to be part of the Economic Development District, that is not joining necessarily as far as a financial contribution, but allowing Marion County to be part of that, which then the second decision after the EDD is created is whether we would want to be members of it, but it would allow us, even if the county does not want to be a member, it would allow our cities to be members. So that decision is the twenty third, or they're at least on the, on the agenda for that. It has been rather hectic, um, I can say in the last couple of weeks with no admin help, uh, that has kind of, with the best of, and just a bunch of things going on right now, as you can tell, I'm kind of on edge, um, things have gotten a little crazy, um, so that's just what's happening. Um, trying to manage that as best as possible. Last thing I have before, unless you have any question, I will share with you our draft, we are still working on this, this is for next year's work plan, so it is truly a draft.
Okay.
But just so you have that to look over, um, the other thing that I would ask you is just to, um, I know there was some mention at the last board meeting about the PPO plan for helping. I know there was some mention at the last board meeting about the PPO plan for health insurance and I would like to ask you to be open to allowing us to have the choice if we choose to pay more money to equal that out to what an HMO plan is, if the employee chooses. For me personally, that plan was very important. And I know you see it as numbers and that's fine, that's your job. But there is another factor that folks that are on a PPO plan, when you're faced with a fatal disease and you need to see doctors immediately, multiple doctors, and you don't have to go to get all the referrals and all the approvals that you have to get on an HMO plan. The PPO plan becomes very important in streamlining care and getting care as quickly as possible.
Okay.
And so I'm not saying that the county has burden, have the burden of the cost of it. I'm just asking you to give us the choice instead of eliminating the, the program.
Yeah, and as far as I know, we, we didn't plan on, nope.
But it was mentioned that next year it would be eliminated, not this fiscal year, but the next fiscal year.
If, so I'll just, I'll just be blunt, Carl. I, I get that. Nobody here sees it just as numbers. Healthcare is a problem across every front. I'm going through the health insurance renewal for my private where I work. Same issue, same issue. Massive healthcare increases, elimination of certain plans, driving everybody toward an HSA with high deductible plans where a deductible is $10,000. That, it's, it's all through the system right now. We will look and try to provide the best benefit program that we can for our employees. We've always done that, we've always committed to that. So we will look at it from every angle.
I just, I just know that with what I had only 20% of people survive five years. I am one of those people. And I believe truly part of it was because I could get care very quickly.
Didn't have to go through the HMO process. You still would have gotten care, just in longer, more burdens.
And, and when your care is at stage three.
Right.
And it borders onto stage four, that's a matter of life or death.
Yeah, I understand.
And so, sorry, I get a little emotional about that.
I appreciate the honesty.
I will tell you, the travel guide is done, but you can't see it. Because it has the best of Red Rock and we're not announcing it until February 23rd. So it looks very good. There was one other thing I had.
I, I will make this comment while you're thinking of it. Thank you, I mean, you've managed your budget very well. I compliment you on that. You've done, I know what, being a single department and, you know, managing and staying within that and, you know, I know there has been some reduction here and so.
Yeah, and I, I know the last note was, I did, I told Keisha this. The first working day in January, I celebrated 25 years as a department head for Marion County. And my commission thanked me for that and that was very much appreciated.
Yep, no.
Very good.
Yep, no.
Been longer than me.
Yep.
I think next, I think Steve's the only department head that's been here longer than I have.
And I've talked to Lisa about that, Carl. So do appreciate that. Everybody here in the new future, we can do some.
We just got the data Friday. That was the other meeting that I was on, I'm sorry, while I was, your meeting was going on. We just got the state data, so I will have the annual business analysis probably in the next couple of weeks completed. So it was a little late coming out. We were supposed to have at the end of December, it came out the end of January. So now I finally have the data, I can start looking and comparing and putting our report together. We are planning to probably do like a state of the economy kind of address, I think, and doing some kind of video with it and doing a more formal release of it besides just what we do when we go to meetings and that kind of thing. But we haven't kind of put that thought together. And a final thank you to KNAIA Careless because they are partnering with us for the best announcement. They will be in here February 10th. We're going to actually videotape it. And they're going to do some fendangle things with it to make it look pretty. And it will premiere on the 23rd at 3:30. We felt, you know, with COVID going on, it was the best decision to make because last year we had well over 130 people there. We just couldn't bring all those people together, even though we could social distance. We just didn't think it was the right thing to do. So we were doing that, mailing out the certificates. The top 10 under 40 we will also announce. And then our commissioners have stepped up and they are going, because they know my, my workload right now is pretty heavy, they are going to help me with delivering and presenting each of those individual awards to the top 10 under 40. So we have beautiful.
And that's also a good way for them to thank, you know, especially.
And if you want to see one of those, I have them in my office. They're beautiful infinity kind of glass art awards that we give to those folks.
Awesome.
Some of them are very proudly displayed in, in some of the different places of people that have had them over the years. So I think spending a little money on those awards and acknowledging our top 10 under 40 gives us a lot of press and capabilities as we're looking at the website and things that we can do better. I think, you know, those videotapes, KNAIA is going to do a story with each of them that are willing to do a story. And so capturing some of those video and bringing video into what we're doing, I think will.
When do we go over 40 or over 50, oh wait, 60. Right, I mean.
So if you're okay with it, I've got to get to a meeting.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Appreciate it. Jake.
It's your down to me. That's okay. No, it's good. So you wanted to.
I'm being efficient.
Talk about department two.
Yeah.
Department two.
Is that what we're.
That's the needs auditor his departments too.
Yes.
And Steve, you're going to go straight to the revenues.
Now, since you guys do have an election this year, I mean, we can, you guys can go part-time, right?
We actually have, we actually have two elections.
There's always an election.
I was going to say something else about elections, Jake, but I'm not going to.
Yeah, no, please don't.
Did you get your pink highlighter on, Steve?
No jokes about elections.
No, we don't want to, no jokes.
No.
Okay, so this is.
It's not my dominion.
Oh, ouch, okay.
I just sneaked that in there.
So this, this election, this election.
Sorry, Jake.
It's been a topic of the whole day, before this, so. So this, this fiscal year is budgeting, it's a flopover. So my, my budget always looks weird from moving a few things around and completely guessing out what it's going to take to run an election. So I'm going to break it down into a couple of different components. First of all, we do budget, we didn't use to, but we do budget a little bit for revenue now for, oh, we know we're going to have city school election this fall. So this is the year that we officially will have city school and primary. It's really scary to think about that, but that's, that's what we're budgeting for in this.
All communities or just one?
So this fall will be the city school board election on one day. They've combined the two. So it will be city council and school boards.
Okay.
This fall. It's the scheduled election.
For all communities of Knoxville, Penn State?
Yep, this is the year. So we don't use city elections every year now. They switched it a few years ago to every other.
Okay.
All school board and.
And school boards. So this fall, the regularly, so right now on the official election calendar for this budget, that's why stuff moves around and you're going to see, that's why it's always kind of weird. We are officially, officially on the road to have city school board election this fall and then the primary next June.
I know, right?
Right? So that's crazy. So that's what this, and this year that we're currently in technically is, was only the general.
Only.
Only.
Last year we had the big school specials in March as well. But, but technically without any specials. So we do budget for a little bit of revenue out of this city school election now because we are allowed to charge them back for certain things. So we can't charge them for our time, but we can charge them for certain things. So you can see last year, we, at the last city school election, we took in $36,000. So I used to not budget for that at all, but I'm going to ahead and, we're going to put that as a revenue and a fund too for that. It's general supplemental fund, not general fund. So that's what you see there. If we have a special or not, you never know, but you have to budget, you have to budget for it. So my budget is also a little bit different when you guys, when we look at the percentages of payroll to operations. I have a little bit more operations than some, even though I have, because we have supplies for the election. The challenging part now is this big, even bigger push for all the absentee voting. In the last three elections we had, we had record-setting absentee voting for the school specials. We had more absentee voting than we have ever had for a special because they targeted, it was a move that was, worked out really well for them. But one of the schools mailed everybody an absentee ballot request. And then people fill it out and send it back in. So you have several thousand that come in that normally you have 100. So then you have to buy all the supplies and the postage and, and all that stuff, all the envelopes. Takes a lot more staff time too as well. So, and then in the primary, COVID was going and there was a lot of more absentee voting. I can't remember if it was six or eight thousand in that. And then, of course, in the general, we went over 10. So you're trying to estimate that. I hope to continue to use my current voting system. I think the system itself works very well. The machines, I think, I don't look to upgrade that yet. We've had that for, I can't remember if it's been eight years or something, quite some time. I, I don't want to change my voting equipment at this point. There's nothing in the budget for that. Eventually, we may have to look at, the other components are poll books. The electronic poll books are now very important. That is being operated out of the, actually, actually ISAC houses the person that kind of manages that for the state and the IT stuff. So that's called Precinct Atlas. At this point, we don't think that's going away, but you never know. And there's a few vendors out there that are pushing for electronic poll books and upgrading reviews. So you, you just never know. It's always a moving target and time always goes a lot faster than it's updated technology. It's not that I have any current plans for that. But there's nothing like, anything major like that in my budget. And if I was going to do a whole new voting system, that would have to come with your approval and I'd ask it out of a different slot in Department 99 anyway. But, and, and technically that is something you can bond for as well.
How, how long ago did we buy this system?
Uh, you know, I, I bring that up, but I think at least eight years.
So something we need to be.
Yeah, and it's a solid, solid system. There's.
I mean, is it like a computer? Does it, does it, yeah, do they only last for so long before you?
Technology continues to enhance and then if laws change, which there will be law changes after this election, but stuff like digital imaging of the ballot and things like that, there's always, there's always a push to be able to get that data electronically instead of having to look at the actual.
Because I think in two years, we're going to have to definitely, I mean, if they change something.
So we'll see. The scanner we use for the absentees is, was a big investment, but I mean, it's that old too. And it just, it's pretty rock solid, so. So we moved around from which elections is budgeted for here. And then I have basic, I have two full-time and a part-time consistently. That's what my staff is. Pretty proud of that and just that we don't have 10 compared to other counties' auditor's offices. Some have a lot, so I'll just put that plug in there. We're proud, pretty proud of the effort that we put forth. You're going to see one, the, the number on the top. One, that is, there's three percent in this budget from actual. We're catching up from that line item from when that budget had to be set for, for that position. So that looks weird. I knew that would be the word. Otherwise, it's three percent plus, well, whatever my comp were, the comp were is. So those are the major changes. It looks like a little bit bigger change in the bottom line, which is going to surprise me. Do you guys have any specific questions about what we do or anything? I leave, there is, there is always, there has been. There's basically two line items in there. One of them is a position that's currently technically part-time. It is still, the line item is.
Still there.
Is full-time. And, and she works full-time during elections, but part-time, it's officially part-time, not during election time. Then there's another split position between the two different funds because I work out of two different funds that doesn't get utilized, but is there if we ever add an additional staff person. Otherwise, it just doesn't get used. Do you want to do actual usage?
So Jake, I'm, I'm.
Page, well, it'd be like eight.
You're talking about the two funds, you're talking about general basic and general supplemental?
Yeah, all of my election stuff is through general supplemental. I'm unique in that standpoint versus the general funds. The administration, administrative side is general fund and anything election-related is, is supplemental.
I'm going to go out here on a little bit of a limb. You were in here when we were talking about, you know, a floating person. Is that anything of you would ever need?
A what?
Like when we talk about a floating type person that, you know, do you ever see that, that would be something?
Uh, I, I don't know. I would never say, never want to say that I wouldn't consider it or talk about it or, or look at it. We've had a few over the years. We've been here, we've had a, a few. I tend to find somebody dedicated, like if it's part-time but dedicated to that, a little bit easier because then there may not be pushes and shoves for time and, and that type of thing. But I mean, I'm always open to talk about that. I've talked about that with Tyler before, with some of the crossover functions that we have.
I think of things like that and then I also think of things like, gosh, it sure would be nice, you know, when we can't, you know, we have to discuss everything and open. It would sure would be nice to have somebody that was the counting side of things because you're so busy with doing auditing stuff. You know, sometimes I would like, oh, it'd be, you know, wonderful to have a person to be able to contact, you know, for ourselves too, to be able to. Because oftentimes I think when, I don't want to burden you with extra things, you know? And so it's like, oh, you know, it puts us in a, you know, situation where that's, that's the, that's the treasure about being, of being a supervisor, you know? And the way we have to communicate is open meetings, so, yeah.
I guess I would encourage you to reach out if you ever have a question or want to, want to ask.
No, I know that and I know, I know that you're always, always to help.
The whole, you guys have to deal with every aspect of the county operation. So having a, having to be able to access all that and, and know how that all fits is, it's hard for somebody that may not be around it all the time.
Yeah, when we're not, you know, big enough for a county manager. You know what I mean? You see some of these counties that have, have managers, you know?
Always been open to that conversation too, but that's a big step.
That is a big step and it's.
I for one would be lost without you, Jake.
Yeah. I, no, we are, we're grateful for you. I just feel like sometimes.
We just got to go about our way. So I mean, like if you ever, if you ever need anything, you just holler. But I, I, I understand what you're saying.
Don't, and don't take that wrong, Jake, because I do reach out to you. I'm just saying, you know, a couple of different things, you know, I don't want to confuse. I didn't know if there was an opportunity when we talk about, you know, missy needing possible assistance, if that would be ever an option there. And, you know, and just where you were at with your, you know, if you feel like, you know, the amount of employees you currently have is, is suffice, you know?
Well, always want to answer that is, we always take an extra employee or two. So, you know, we've been there a long time and vacation things and scheduling and we have got ourselves into a mode of being pretty dedicated just to tasks that we do and not, we're trying to do, trying to make it more concerted effort to do some crossover again, but we've kind of got backwards on that a little bit again. So, you know, we kind of live on a, on an edge a little bit on one person doing one thing and that's what we do and we go on. So, you know, maybe, I, I, I would be open to discussion on anything. That's kind of how it works. You toss things around and.
Yeah.
See if you can get it.
Nothing's definite, you know, yeah, just.
Yeah.
Just wanted to have an open conversation with you.
No, I understand.
So I don't have any other questions.
Steve, anything?
Yes. On the revenue side, Jake. 466%, what is that? Can you, did I miss something?
Revenue side.
What page are you on?
Oh, okay, so.
That's where he's adding in that.
It's page two on the revenue side. So what that means is that last year I only budgeted $7,500 to take in as revenue. And this budget has 40, 42,500.
I thought it was a budget number.
It's an increase from one budget to the next. That's what all those are. And it's because I have the city school in this year. I didn't have the city school in the last year.
All right. I just, it just kind of glared out at me.
Yeah. I'm not that good.
Okay.
It's because there's a scheduled election. It's because there's a scheduled election.
Here you are.
Um, we did, just as a sidebar, um, we got twenty thousand dollars of HAVA money. Um, from a grant from the Secretary of State. It's not HAVA money. I said that wrong. We got twenty thousand dollars, um, through the Secretary of State to use during the covid, um, through one of their grant distributions. So. That went into.
Have we, have we received any of this, this core or CARES Act money? Have we, have we finalized with the state in any way or feds? Uh, cause I think he, Jeff's department was still waiting for some funds.
I believe that the FEMA money is still outstanding.
Yes.
Okay.
That, the, um, the other grant, the county received their funds.
Right.
Okay.
And that was deposited.
All right. Anything else on department, on his, on Jake's department? Where he's going, what he does. In fact, he put a, I saw, you know, where Jake was going to Pennsylvania to advertise his services to help them with their election.
No. You don't hear me, you don't hear me say no very often, but no.
I just wanna see how many Facebook comments I can get. That's what I've got in for Jake.
Considering you don't have Facebook.
I'm on Facebook.
Well, on a personal note, Jake, I think Marion County is very lucky to have.
Yeah, we are very blessed. Yep. Thank you, Jake, for doing that.
For eight years together. I know you've been, uh, the glue that's held multiple boards together, so.
I appreciate that. I'll just say thanks. It's a two-way, it's a, everybody works together and we, we, we're a family. So, you know, we all might not. Get along or even like each other every day, but we.
Certainly not every day.
I was gonna say, I was in a whole week of a togetherness.
Yep. We get, we, we get it done.
Yeah, we do. You guys do.
The whole, the whole county just gets it done.
Nope, I do. Yep. Everybody stepped up to the plate.
Very good. So, uh, you wanna talk about any other, uh, Department ninety-nine, anything like that with Jake while he's here and we got him and?
You guys wanna do a few minutes? Do you wanna go through ninety-nine a little bit?
Yeah, that's fine. Yep.
Yeah.
Um, and actually, any, if you have any questions on any of them, the tabs that are green are ones that you.
Control?
Kind of control that we kind of slot into.
Yep.
But ninety-nine would be good if you don't mind.
Sure.
And then looking ahead to tomorrow, it's tomorrow Friday already.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So, um, you know, the major top, the major top, major decisions would be. Making sure you're establish your levy.
Right.
If that's gonna change or not.
Yes, well, I was gonna say, let's, let's go through ninety-nine and then we're right, Jake, as we, as we think about tomorrow.
Right.
We've got our list of things to go through to finalize. Uh, levy.
It, it's, it's essentially levy, comp board, and if there are any changes anywhere else that you guys want before. To final draft that needs to be requested.
Right.
Those are really the, where we're, where you're at.
And I think the main, you know, the one, since you, since you brought that up, Jake, let's, let's talk about this a little bit. We can certainly talk more tomorrow. From a, you know, in, in all the meetings we've had, all the discussions we've had, salaries have been one of the key topics.
Yes.
So I think you gotta give some thought to that. Uh, not that we're gonna necessarily change our recommendation. But on a go-forward basis, how are we going to deal with salary competitiveness? On, and do we have any tools available to us to be able to do that? We need to do research on the merit side.
I did last night.
Well, you did. Do you, do you have anything you can share?
I do. Would you like to hear it?
I would love to hear it.
Well, if you declare. Um. A true discretionary. Bonus. So it's a truly discretionary, meaning that it, um. The employer has the sole discretion to pay it, determine the amount, and that it's not, um. Stated in any agreement or contract or anything like that previously. So, um. Then as long as the recommendation from, um, Hopkins-Hewittner is that, um. You can make the statement that the bonus was made due to extraordinary efforts by the employee. And then it is called a discretionary bonus and it is not subject to, um, mess with their pay.
Hmm, uh, good. Doesn't impact IFRS, don't, they can.
They, well, they, they have to pay taxes on it.
They have to pay taxes on it.
Yeah, sure. Doesn't impact IFRS.
And I don't know about IFRS.
IFRS is the.
Yes, we would need to check with IFRS next. Okay? Um, but one step forward. So as long as it's discretionary.
Okay.
Then, and you say it's for.
And, and so when we declare, so this would be the next step of your research, Lisa. So as the budgetary entity, the Board of Supervisors. We can, if I understand correctly, declare a bonus for a particular employee. Can we? Uh, allot bonus dollars to a department for that manager to?
That would be a lot easier.
Yes. So it's one thing for us to say. Jake gets bonus X, okay? That's one, that's one way of doing it. And that's fine. It's a good thing to know that we have that, we'd have that ability. But I would love to be able to say. Department X gets a bonus pool of five thousand dollars for that manager to distribute based on merit.
It'd be a discretionary fund within the department.
Right.
Only for that purpose, not to be padded someplace else.
Exactly. And and of course, we'll ask for an accounting, but if you give it out. You have to say why, tell us why. So there would, there would definitely be accountability to that. So again, these are research steps. We're not, we're not making any promises that we're gonna do this. But when you think about the difference between salary and bonus money. Although bonuses are taxed at a higher rate, it per, it does keep down wage inflation for us. So if you look at some of these areas, work comp is a great example. We've saved over, well over one hundred thousand dollars in work comp.
That'd be a, that's a good place to distribute it. And that's why the people need to know that.
Yep. I mean, I said, that's, that's, that's employees who have stepped up and done.
Fund?
Yeah, I, the principle is the same.
What's that?
I, I didn't mean to interrupt.
You're fine.
No, the principle is the same. It's the, it's the wrong fund, but, but it's the, the principle is the same.
This would have to come out of general fund.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, this is.
I'm not saying in fact that particular pool of money has to go toward that, Jake. I'm just saying.
But you save here, so you can give it here.
You save here.
Yeah. And I get it, you know, we've got different funds and all restrictions with that. There, we can't pool our money in. We got a big burrow with the state to say, please, may I have some more? So, anyway.
That's, that's good. That's good to know.
Keep going.
I was good to know.
Uh, I just think we gotta have some tools in our tool belt. And it can't always be just raised.
Pay-raising.
It, it just, it's not.
Cause we, we're getting to a point where, yeah, and what we talked about even today and yesterday, and I've had people reach out to me. You know, and I have had to explain, you know, there's only, we talked to Stephen, I talked about this a lot. There's only so much money and there's only, you know. Uh, a pool and there's going to be some caps. Meaning like, you know, you're, it's going to be maybe whatever you can, you know, if it's the, um, can, you know, CPI, Consumer Price Index, you know, is, is it two point seven? Well, that's maybe, you know, there may be some years we can only give two. There may be some that we have three and.
Well, I'm a, I'm a strong proponent of merit-based. Increase rather than percentages because some people are getting rewarded that don't deserve to be rewarded.
Well, again, most of our larger departments should be giving merits. I mean, there should, the raises should be based on merit because that's what we've said for now, eight years. Seven years.
Yeah.
It shouldn't be across the board, everything. And I know Kim does that. I know, uh, I think Tyler does that with his department.
Ty, Tyler is, struggles with that with his.
Okay.
What, and he would be for the, I'm speaking for Tyler, but I believe he, he likes the bonus. So then he can, otherwise his, his, um, job functions, um. He, 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 his wages are set on equipment operator, one, two, three, engineering tech. So you start giving people more money because they're doing excellent job. Now his excuse is whole pay ceiling.
Sure.
But, but if he could give bonuses out, that would solve that.
You know, and part of, part of, I think part of the process has to be, we have to have, and we talked about it, you have to do some type of structured. Pay base for a position, whatever that may be, however that's gonna look. I don't know. But, you know, you cap out, whatever. You can't come, you can't continue the.
Well, no, and and you can't. And a, a job's only worth so much.
Yes.
I mean, I'm, I'm being a little, but in the, in the private sector, a job is only worth so much.
And if you're not happy and you want promotion, you keep.
You go to a certain position, pick principal, pick whomever, and there, there's a salary range. And once you hit the top end of that range. It's either time to say, well, I'm, I, I like my job. I wanna keep doing it.
Or I move on to a different job.
Move on to something else. I mean, I got thirty years of, of changing jobs because I wanted to make more money. Um, and. That concept in government doesn't exist.
Well, what's great, if you, if you have that, if you have that structure in place and you topped out and you did a. Great job for something, you did something, you can reward them.
Right. And the other thing about creating some kind of a bonus pool that is to all of our advantages, including the taxpayers. Is that pool money comes through savings. Like we're talking.
Mm-hmm.
If, if our employees embrace a work comp philosophy that reduces those expenses. It's not that we're gonna take that money and say, now we're gonna give it all to you in salary, but we can now, now we've got some, some dollars to work with. So we're getting expense reductions.
Yeah, the same thing in being efficient. Efficiencies of, you know, if you can do something online and.
Dollars you can work with for your employees for their benefit.
Yeah, it's not gonna be an annual bonus, right?
But it, but it has to be, there's a correlation to that. And I, and I think that's also beneficial for the taxpayer as well.
Why do you do?
I'm sure it's driving for that improvement in what we do. And that should be something we all strive for.
Uh, I, I'm glad you researched, Lisa. I mean, that's, that's good to know.
I'll, I'll continue.
Take it to that next step and then we'll see what we do, if there's anything. So Jake ninety-nine.
Yeah, if you guys would like it, that'd be.
Not Agent ninety-nine, but Department ninety-nine.
And again, if you have questions on any of that.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
All right, where's the?
Do, I know we, I'll even look at the first one. Herda, are we?
Well, what TV?
Oh.
Oh, see, what?
Age.
Don't look at me. I don't know.
Herda is only asking for what they asked for last year.
That's what I was just gonna ask you. Was, what's Herda? Was, is it the same?
I know they sent that.
Okay, so you're gonna do ninety-nine? You weren't talking about, yeah, ninety-nine. And I'll, I'll do my best without having access to like look up a number.
Yeah.
Or not gonna hold you. So if you just wanna start, go to your nine, ninety-nine tab and, and look at the lines. Herda is like the, the top one. Um, so we, when, when Dana and I kind of went through this and tried to. Um, project as much as we could or just put, we don't generally, our mode is not to change for you guys, just to change. I mean, they're, they're, we don't, that's not what we do.
Right.
All right. But if there was a request or something, it's the budget start and then you can take it out. And, and just because it's a budget and it's in there. Doesn't mean you guys are, have to spend it. You still have to give the authority after next year to spend it. And you guys understand, it's just like. Salary lines or whatever. A budget is just, there still has to be the authority and to go ahead to, to, to actually spend it. So. So the Herda, um, li- line is that the monthly amount is the same. You see that they did in their. In their email here or whenever they had sent that, they had a vehicle grant request in that.
Yeah, that's no longer in there.
So you want me to take that out?
Yeah, take the vehicle grant out, cause they said that they would just accept what they had got the year before.
Good.
Okay.
We'll just. Oh, I see. The thirteen.
So the thirteen thousand nine twenty-six.
They're in kind.
How'd they receive that, Steve?
They actually are the ones who stepped up, stepped it up and said that.
Ah, very good.
Cause she wanted to know if they were on, make the presentation and meeting. I was, actually, I was in the middle of Mojave Desert when she get, when I got the email.
We can leave the impact at this point, but I don't know that we're gonna be doing that.
We're going to take that request out and just look for the extra money. We just, what we got last year, should we need to come to a meeting? I says, no. If that's what you're gonna ask, I don't think you need to come to and make a presentation.
Capital improvement, do we have that in here where we?
So, uh, if you don't mind, let's just take our finger and scan down otherwise all. So, um, yeah, the Herda then. You have your monthly contribution that's been the annual one. And then I'll go ahead and take that thirteen nine two six out of that.
Out.
Uh, and then impact is the in, the annual number.
Yep.
Um, as you can see from actual that, there hasn't ever been cash going out for that. It's only been the in-kind. So even though it's been budgeted for several years, there hasn't been actually cash outflow.
Do we have to do that, Jake, then? Do we have to put a number to it? Since it's in kind?
The, this is not the in-kind partial portion. This gives, gives you flexibility if you want to give them a contribution. I think they asked.
We give them five. So is this where this five is gonna come from?
I don't, uh, yes.
Then reduce it to five.
Looking again, I don't.
That's what we decided we matched. Five.
To impact.
Last, last meeting.
Yeah, last, last meeting, they were here.
We agreed.
For their five.
And they get, we give them five. We.
Oh, I see. I thought you meant.
Yeah, but in the past, yeah, we have.
We can, this can be dropped to five.
We give them five and then.
Is that, then, I mean, that's your number. There isn't any flexibility.
It's fine.
That's fine. Just drop that to five, Jake.
Okay.
Yeah, the in-kind is not, it does not reflect on actual number. That's all the other, the other stuff. No pushing point.
Good. And then we've got Congress meals.
Yep. And so this number comes from, um, Kim, when Kim does her budget, then she, I mean, this is the main driver for funding the Congress meals program. And this is the number that she, basically the goal with that, um, seen Congress meals, senior nutrition program would, is like, it's its own fund. And so it, to be zero at the end of the year. So this is what she thinks she's gonna have to make up the difference for, from any outside funding. And the expenses to make that, to make that zero.
So as part of the rea, I just wanna understand, is Jake, I mean, if you don't know, we can ask him. So we've only used twenty-one percent of this year's budget.
Yeah, I see that.
Is that covid?
Uh, I, I don't know exactly. We have funded that different ways depending, um, sometimes it, it was a, once a year. Um, Alec request from them as a claim. As, as it's changed over the years from when it had full-time onsite manager onsite and all that. And then Lindsay, we were, like, how much administration do you wanna do? Do, do they wanna turn in a claim to the general fund? And then we receipted in with the treasurer once a year. Then we went to every quarter and then, you know, and then Lindsay left. So. Um, you know, and, and then a, a monthly allocation. We had kind of gotten the fact of we, when your month-end reports come out, it's kind of nice to see that that's a positive balance on that fund. It should be. So maybe we were doing receipting and more. I got, I don't know specific to why that's lower. Some of it is less expense and another is. With their turnover and stuff. So they just may not have submitted a claim lately. Okay. And again, this is one that if they don't submit the claim, it doesn't get used. So you can see historically. Um, you know, in, in seventeen eighteen, it was the county funded over two hundred thousand for that program. And then it went down to one sixteen and. And one fifty-three. So it's as needed to for the operations of the bill.
Yeah, I think we're, we're better aligned now as far as the administrative.
And the senior nutrition fund is a dedicated fund that only can be used for that. And there's, you have that balance high.
I think it'll be, it'll be, it'll be a more true number.
So tell me where we're at. Is the Travis Trust money in this?
Uh, the tr, the Travis Trust.
Is it in ninety-nine or is it, does it stand separate?
Well, the Travis Trust is a standalone fund.
Okay.
And.
We're sitting at one sixty-three. Do I remember that number right?
It, it's real close that I don't, I don't know exactly.
Was it one sixty-something and then we give ten thousand?
We took ten, we took ten out of it for one emergency funding for.
There's been one.
Knoxville Nutrition.
Yep.
Yep. So I don't believe.
So it's in between one fifty and one sixty.
I, 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 I haven't thought about Travis Trust for, so I, but Mark, I think that that is a non-budgetary fund. So it's not like in this. It, so to, to, to spin that out, I don't think it is, has to be an approved. It's, it's a non-budgetary fund. So it, I don't believe there's anything in here to pay that out.
Okay.
But that's what I'm trying to say. And if I'm wrong, I will send you an email that there, that I don't believe though.
Yeah, if you could just maybe, maybe just refresh that, Jake, that what that number is, what remains. And again, it's, it's.
Cause we had to create an expense line, expense COA to pull that out and write that check. Um, whatever that was, but I don't think it involved budgeting in that because there wouldn't be anything budgeted. Cuz we had to create an expense line, expense COA to pull that out and write that check, um, whenever that was, but I don't think it involved budgeting in that, because there wouldn't be anything budgeted.
Right.
It's a non-budgetary, it's more like, senior nutrition is a non-budgetary fund, you have a tab in here, because it's nicer to track and see what's, where the expenses are going and things like that, but it's not an actual budgetary fund on the financial report. Uh, the other, on the bottom of that, um, the bottom of that page there, the environmental cleanup number, that got inserted, as you can see, it's been, uh, well, actually, I think that, that's a budgeted number.
Yeah.
Um, I think that's probably been here four, five, six years now, I'm not sure, the first time you used it was in eighteen nineteen, thirty-two, so again, that's a, a budgeted number that is reflective all the way through to a fund balance out of the, under the general fund. Again, we, we, we just leave that number there cuz it's been there in the past, I don't know if you wanna leave there or not, it's, you know, that's, that's a big budget number.
I mean, could it be a, an environmental capital, I mean, can we, do we have to keep it as?
No. Knock that down to a hundred? Until we get some kind of request for a major cleanup, we've had the one, that I know of, that I can remember.
Yes.
Didn't have that one property.
They're working.
Depends on how aggressive they're gonna get at that.
So, I mean, we still struggle with our, I mean, we don't have necessarily the staff to do, to do the enforcement side.
Right.
So, having two hundred thousand dollars sitting idle, even though it is a budgeted number, let's, let's take that out, let's take that down to a hundred, if we need to spend something, at least we've got it.
Okay.
Then we can further refine that next year.
And as always. As long as, yes, that's fine, you can always amend if you have.
Yeah, if we have to, if we have to, but I think.
As long as there's cash.
Take a hundred thousand of that.
Yeah, I would prefer that to go towards capital.
And I think that's, Keisha, I think you're right, I think can, where's the, when we get to capital.
Yeah, we have it, she's got fifty.
Um, so, uh, onto page two there of the non-departmental, um, we're down to, again, this is very minimal lines, if you wanna ask specific questions or not. We do budget, historically in the past, there was always money going towards the memorial halls, we have not actually paid any cash to any of them for quite some time. We're down to only, um, just the one.
Just take the thousand out.
Just the one, um.
Just take it out, I know they've got cash.
Okay. And we haven't, there hasn't been any given for several years. So, um, on down through, um, you can see.
What's the general county management seventeen-five, what's that? Miscellaneous.
You go to down there. Okay, so that is a, um, a non-designated amount, a, a non-designated, it's just if something would, if you need to have some budget room, you have it there, there's a few line items like that, so it's, it's not targeted to a specific expense, because things just come up that you just aren't planning on.
Okay.
So it gives you.
So such as when we had the lobbyist, I mean, and you probably have a, a line item in here at some point.
I believe so, but like, out of this year.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
That would be covering that.
Cover that, I mean, that's how that all works, like, the, the two hundred thousand that was there for the environmental cleanup. If that doesn't get used, can it be used somewhere else, so the bottom of the budget doesn't go over? Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a total, for the total budget as a whole, yeah, allows a little flexibility. Um, the EAP program is, is there, on there still?
How much is, how much do we have budgeted for that?
Uh, five thousand?
Okay.
So what is that?
That is for the annual, um, we cover everybody, full-time, part-time, choice is this program, so if life challenges get in the way.
No, I know what, I know what the EAP is, but this is the program we administer, it comes out of ninety-nine, I thought it came out of your budget. Oh.
No.
Why wouldn't it come out of HR, since Lisa's the primary contact?
Well, I think it was actually here before HR.
Yeah, cuz like, unemployment comes out of there, EAP comes out of there, uh, it, just because that's, yeah.
We, we can, it's all general fund.
Do you manage it? Do you manage the EAP program? Are you the contact?
Yeah.
Why didn't we just put it in HR?
It's up to you.
It's on you.
Then we have all the employee-related stuff in HR.
So is, uh, what's the other one that's not in your department? Um. You were just telling me the other day that it's in, it was in ninety-nine or something, it wasn't.
Well, you're, there's quite, I mean, like, vision.
Yeah, the visionary is all that, is that, is that, we keep that all separate, okay.
The only other thing that I would think about maybe moving is work comp, not work comp. Back up. Unemployment. Cuz you have an employment comes out of Department ninety-nine, so I don't, I don't see, like, I code, I code the claims to come out of ninety-nine, but I don't see, I don't know where we stand, just like the EAP, I don't, I just pay the bill.
Yeah, all right.
So, just thought, just a thought.
We'll come down to that, right?
Okay, yep, yep. Yeah, and it's not anything that I know I can't get.
So what's the next one, Jake?
So the next one is, um, we've been doing this for quite some time, it's, it's a safeguard against a, a catastrophic medical expense of a prisoner. So we have been purchasing a, um, a, insurance, cuz we, cuz when somebody's in, somebody's a prisoner, and if they have a, a major catastrophic illness with a helicopter flight and a, and a major bill, this.
What's this in Jason's budget?
It's, again, been here a long time, and it was considered to be a, and basically like liability insurance or something like that to, to help protect the general fund as a whole, and.
But if I remember right, wasn't it, it was Jason and Ed who came and talked about this to the board a number of years ago?
I don't remember, I mean, I'm just looking through here, we've had it at least in seventeen eighteen, and, and I mean, I know we've had it.
Oh, well, I know.
Because I think even before, they were doing some bill management.
I remember the discussion.
Yeah, cuz I think Scott was here maybe, and, and they were doing some management, and ended up being able to work out with the hospital better than, um, than going through that program, so I think they dropped that.
Let's do.
We'll keep it, we'll keep it.
Again.
What page are you on, general?
Not a big one, all right, uh, then, then we'll plan it permits.
This, yep.
Yeah, right, yeah.
The no-lead appointment program?
Where are we, are you there?
I'm on the next page, five twenty-seven.
That's the texting, yep.
The appointment software?
That's the appointment software?
And who uses that?
Uh.
Everybody?
Mm-hmm, well, whoever's doing the appointment.
Reporter, treasurer.
Can they all do, okay.
I don't, I think so for the.
Yeah.
Good, and then miscellaneous?
That was that new thing we just got.
That's the miscellaneous, though, that if we have extra, like, you know, that's what he's talking about, if we have something come up that we can say ninety-nine will pay for.
Which happens.
It does?
Yeah, so, and for instance, when we didn't have.
We won't spend a hundred and thirty bucks?
No, I mean, in general, as the, as a concept.
As a whole, the ninety-nine.
I don't know that I specifically target this one.
Yeah, I understand.
All right, you want seventeen thousand in it?
That permitting, that permitting system, I, I think is actually for that, the, the comprehensive one, I don't know that that's the, no, I have to have my number.
All right.
I need my keyboard.
It's all right. Do we want seventeen thousand in that miscellaneous?
You tell me.
You said you want seventeen thousand in that?
I think we could easily count, knock it down to ten.
Okay.
Let's knock it down to ten.
Um.
We got, okay, Steve.
Yeah, ADA. Um.
Other policy administration, two thousand, what's that?
It's just another catch-all. I, I don't, I don't know if that's my keyboard, it's just, it's just a catch-all, it's probably been there.
Let's, uh, let's, let's delete that.
Okay.
So I'm gonna just remember we got one hundred and two thousand. Phone services, okay. Accounting clerical.
Okay, so that's the audit fees, annual audit fees? They also help us with the accrual report.
Your philosophy when you have time, have major pileups in Jasper County on interstate, potentially, uh, trooper fatality. Um, two, at least two state patrol squad cars crunched, there's a semi laying on one of them. Um, so it's not very good, nor, um, Tyler's crew are having trouble here, just wondering what your thoughts are about closing at three o'clock and getting everybody home off the roads, I believe Tyler's gonna shut things down no later than six.
Is he back on the road now?
Yeah, but they're, but they're having trouble, so he's restricting them back to, I'm speaking your language, back to primary routes.
Is it just the roads are icing over?
Yeah, and the wind, the wind out in the open areas, it's not really bad right here, but I think out in the open areas, it's, it's getting just difficult, shut it down at three.
It was nasty coming here.
It was, yeah.
Do you wanna call the revenue section?
Sure.
You want me to send out an email?
Yeah, yeah, take care of it.
I'll send out the email.
I just tuned in everybody home before.
Yep, agreed, agreed.
Okay, looks a hazardous duty pay call.
Okay, so dues and memberships, oh, that's the dues like ISAC and stuff, is that what that is?
Yeah.
Okay.
The next one is, uh, contributions to the government, so it's a, it's a fifteen thousand dollar line item, and it just depends on what you guys, if somebody comes see with a request.
Where are you at now?
We're on page four, ninety-nine.
So you can see historically, how it's been used, or how much it's been used, this is not the annual contribution to the Knoxville library, that's coming out of local option sales tax, but it's, it's, um.
I've seen where, like, in use twen- twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. There's quite a bit used.
Yeah, that's cuz, um, the county, um, contributed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the road and plus the.
That's right. Okay.
Um, going on down, uh, the postage line is, is a, is a complete shot in the dark, and we ended up actually just leaving it. Um, postage, uses of postage is, um, we, we sent out a lot of mail, and the treasury process has been incredibly busy, all during COVID and stuff, that people are transitioning to using mail a lot.
So what about, yeah, like this.
All those transactions, people.
For your auditor stuff and all that, is that?
Uh, this is the general postage machine for everybody out of the courthouse.
Okay.
Um, you know, treasurer and recorder by far use it the most, um, election time, we try and fund some out of fund two, um, for the absentees going out. And then the business reply, all the stuff that comes back that we pay for, and that we take out, out of fund two, but this is basically general mail out of the courthouse, and then the, and the volume is big, the more, the.
I mean, cuz we've got two that are.
Treasurer, I mean, has just puts out lots and lots of mail, because they're doing lots of business and, and, and very busy, so you, you just don't know. Um, we left it just because we didn't know where to go with it.
Did the COVID thing probably increase our mailing thing since people?
Yeah, they've been rocking it.
Okay, so the website, no, no, it's that, okay.
Yeah, we put the website in there, that's where we put it, we didn't know where to, and, and of course, the, the major outflow is a one-time deal, and that might be this year. That might be in this fiscal, so, but again, we can't affect that now.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, what a great question.
No, but I was thinking of that, and for next year, or, you've got it in this thirty-seven for next year, should there's, should that be under, cuz when we talked to Andrew and IT and GIS, I mean, since that's Nicole, is that something that would be, need to move, I mean, that, that, that fifteen hundred, or is that something that we'll just leave in general?
I assume that would be more of a central service type, it's, it's the countywide website.
Yeah, and you're probably, you're right there, yeah.
Again, it's all general fund, so if it shows up in one department, it's up to you, as long as you have tabs on it.
I get what you're saying, yep.
Hey, Keisha, this is Andrew, uh, we have already paid the first half of the install for the website, and then the other half will come due at the end. And that came out of that line item.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Have a good one. Thanks, Andrew, that's a printing, when I printed this, that, that expense one, did you show it?
Okay.
Yeah, it'll, it'll actually be on next claim.
Okay, great, thank you.
You tell me if you wanna see.
I'm just looking at, I mean, all that's gonna be.
Fixed equipment, yeah.
Yeah, uh, yes. And we were, we, we did pay for east as well, and we, so, got caught up with the city on the electric.
So we've got general, so I'm, I'm all the way down to, uh, five oh six, Jake?
To what?
Third line up from the bottom, page seven.
Okay.
Twenty thousand dollars for general services, repair and maintenance to the courthouse.
Yeah, so, again, some of the, you can see what some of the expenses has been used year-to-date, and some of that, some of the stuff that has been going on, um, courthouse-related, has just been coming out of the non-departmental side and not through Department fifty-one, cuz it was a one-off to him.
Right.
So that's where most of these, uh, some of these repairs and stuff was.
Okay.
And, again, it was a shot in the dark, um, most of those, the major remodel projects are gonna be done maybe by then.
Yeah.
Again, if you wanna change that number, do it or, do whatever.
Well, where is our, uh?
Cuz you got fixed plant, which is ten thousand, and then you got courthouse repair.
Yeah, so where, where's our, uh?
Capital improvements.
Capital improvement.
Okay, so do you mean the, uh, the major bond ones, or the?
No.
Where we set aside money.
Okay, so that would, that, um, they set that up actually as a transfer, um, so if you, let's see, I gotta think.
Page nine, clear at the bottom.
Oh, yeah, well, page, page ten, at the bottom, isn't it?
Capital.
Capital projects buildings.
Okay, so that, no, the actual one, I, if I'm, make sure I'm on the same page, so you're talking about, like, um, we have the capital projects fund that the county farm money went into, and then some was used, and you wanted to start making an annual contribution of that to try and build that up, right?
Yeah.
So that, that concept, that idea, is if you go to page ten, in the middle of the page, it's an operating transfer.
I see what you're doing, yep.
So what that requires is it's gonna require a resolution for you guys each year to tell me to put the expense and the treasurer to actually transfer that money between funds, cuz it's two budgetary funds, but that's that budgeted fifty thousand there.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, the one, that's, and, and again, that was the number you talked about at one point, that number can be different, it is, it is a general fund expense.
Right, so could, could we do this, where you look at all of these, I mean, you've got land improvements, VA campus,
Mm-hmm.
Uh, capital projects, other.
Right, put them all into one?
I'd say, can we put them all in that capital improvements fund?
Um, I'm just not, I'm sorry, I'm not.
Take all of these dollars, the ten thousand, the fifty thousand, the other fifty thousand, and move that all into this capital improvements fund one thousand seven, or ninety-nine, whatever, I don't know what the numbers, but, can we take, so we've got, if you look down all these general fund, uh, seven, 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 VA campus.
Seven, seven, seven is the project, uh, code that we designated for the VA expenses.
Okay, so what, but it's land improvements?
Yeah, it's because we didn't, from the chart of account, I didn't know what to call it at the time, so, um, that's a chart of account number.
So if we're gonna set aside money for the VA, this is good, this is good discussion, I guess it would be just the VA campus project.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what this fund would be, and anything that we have to set aside from a board perspective to pay for any services related to this, so it wouldn't be necessarily the, would be the bond?
Yeah.
If we had, we paid contract?
So all the ongoing stuff right now that we are, that has been incurred, like, fence and all that, that's coming out of this lineup, cuz it's a general fund expense, cuz it, there isn't anywhere else.
Okay, so, I'm just thinking in my head here, Jake, I'm an organization, so then keep that fund, and that becomes our VA operating fund.
That lineup.
That lineup, okay, and you got ten thousand in it right now, but when we issue debt, that no, will that number go in there?
Um, the, the debt is showing, is, is a different fund, because that's capital, that's bond proceeds in, and those expenses will come out, uh.
Well, then I, I, what I'm trying to do.
We have to put, we have to put a fund.
I'm trying to keep it so that we can consolidate our dollars, we know what we have, and we don't have some of these ten thousand, four thousand, five thousand, they just linger out there.
We have to put those funds somewhere to pay out.
Right, so either, so either, if that ten thousand, and whatever we wanna say. and whatever we wanna say is for the V A project, why can't we have one fund where it's, unless you've got a segmented, so we have two lines. You have two lines. I'm looking at how you've got the uh capital improvements line and okay, capital improvements fund, so you have two lines, you'd have the bond proceeds line and the other V A or whatever. I don't know what to call it. But that way we don't lose track that we've set aside ten thousand dollars of non-bond money to pay for some for the V A.
Uh yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so that's kinda currently how we're operating, cause there wasn't anything set aside yet from when the budget was from so long. So we are trying to target all the expenses going out to the V A right now out of a singular line. And it's coming out of the general fund because of, that's all that there is available at this point.
The current expenses we have would be the, the survey going on and things like that.
Fence.
Fence, mowers, all those things we took out of the singular line. Um that would show that, that one that has the ten thousand dollar, I mean, that's a minimal amount, I guess. My, when we were doing this, we left a little bit in there, but when you sell bonds, all that basically expense will go to the bond proceeds for, for the demo stuff, and there won't be any ongoing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, sorry.
I'm just trying to figure out how to do the accounting so we can keep track of it.
Keep track of the expenses?
Well, yeah, your fund balance.
So as you're, you're gonna have, we've, we've got all these miscellaneous funds, I, that's what I call it. They, yes, they've got designations, but they're miscellaneous funds. And it's clear, it's been, ever since we've been doing this, Jake, sometimes we lose track of the money that's been allocated, so then we don't either use it or reallocate it or get rid of it. Cause it just kinda sits there as a budgeted number, right? But if you budget ten thousand, you take ten thousand dollars away from something else that you could apply it to.
If you have, y- yes, if, yes.
Well, I assume we, if, if we don't have it, we wouldn't, it'd be zero.
Well, if you had a, a zero sum ba- budget, that oftentimes, I mean, from a budget standpoint, this is where we, um, the ten thousand dollar allocated um is an actual ten thousand dollars in your hand. It's a budgeted number, that if you don't use it somewhere else, you can't use it there, but um.
Uh yeah, I, I know what you're saying.
So, so like if, if we have a negative bu- bu- budget anyway, which in general fund doesn't this time, but um.
I mean, we have a negative budget.
Well, if we have more expenses budgeted than revenues for the year.
Well, sure.
That's, that's all I'm trying, that, that, you know.
This is making our fun, I mean, you know, those things that he's eliminating, but if you can take the, what we talked about before, some of those up here and allocate it towards, whether it's V A or capital improvements or the hundred thousand, the hundred.
Just leave it there, just leave it there, and we'll, we'll figure it out.
Is it that, do you, would you like the ongoing V A expenses before the proceeds to be coming out of that um cap? The, the fund, the, the money that came from the?
No, all I want is this, it's very simply, I want a fund, a, a number like the projects fund. We put specific dollars into that capital improvement fund from the sale of the county.
County home.
And we knew that we were going to replenish that fund for other capital projects.
Okay.
Broad sweep, doesn't matter what the.
Okay.
V A, I'm seeing something very similar. We're going to issue debt to pay for specific things related to the V A. So I see that there would be another line, like the capital improvements fund for V A stuff. That's my inarticulate, non-accounting way of saying.
Okay.
So then that, then there's a, there's a total there, and our accounting would be any payment made related to the V A comes out of that fund.
So he can mo- you, so you can monitor, so we can bring it up when you do your monthly reports.
So if you go to page, if you go to page sixteen.
Yeah. And I don't mean to beat the dead horse here, Jake, but this is gonna be, it's gonna be a larger, it's gonna be a large sum of money. And we're going to want to make sure we can keep track of it and not have it in four or five different lines that we forget where it's at.
Okay, so the page sixteen?
Sixteen?
I think it should be hoping page sixteen. I tried to do it, print them all, so we'd have the same pages.
Yeah.
Towards the bottom, under fund thirty, capital projects.
Yeah.
For the V A campus with the seven, seven, seven on it, any ten million dollars?
Great.
Is that, that's where that's gonna come from?
Perfect.
Yeah.
But we don't have any money for that fund, but right now, we're just doing our.
I got it.
Our ongoing out of the general fund, so we're using that other line item, and that's why that dropped to ten.
Okay, so we've got, we've got that line, got it. Thank you.
This, this line item is our money and the other line item is the borrowed money.
It's all borrowed.
Yeah, I know, I know it's all borrowed.
Um alright. Yeah, got it. And we've got debt service.
I guess the look, um of the three decisions, like for the, you know, the levies and the pot work, one of the other things for tomorrow, Mark, would be if you wanna change the percentage distribution on how you're doing that local option. It's been thirty, fifty percent goes to the fund twenty-nine, the local option fund that we're kinda saving up at this point. Um and then it's been thirty, twenty for several years. That is how that's budgeted in here in one of these pages. But that is a separate resolution that will be going into the budget, but you kind of, that's something that you will wanna decide tomorrow. Those are the three, those three items.
No, it's a good reminder. Now I'd be thinking about how, how to allocation.
So if you look in your local option sales tabs, set, local option sales tax tab there in the front, then that shows how much is going to each of those.
Right, yeah.
Which is basically cash in for general fund and general stuff.
So when we were, when we were arbitrarily talking about the, the capital improvement line.
Yeah.
So we're moving, if, if we, if we was to take that a hundred thousand dollars out of property and environmental cleanup, was your idea to to transfer that money into that line item?
Yes.
And maybe the thousand dollars on memorial and ten thousand dollars on impact?
Yep.
Okay.
That's what I, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I think it's a good idea.
I can change that budget.
Well, let's do that.
You want that to be a, a, a V A number or a non-V A?
No, that'd be a non-V A.
It'd be non-V A.
And what number would you like that be?
Well, I don't know.
And again, it's a budgeted number, it's gonna require us coming to you with a resolution, seeing how much you actually wanna move from the general fund to that
Yeah.
in that fiscal year.
Right.
Because it's a, a transfer.
Right. But I think that puts a, that puts a control on, that's the whole point of doing that was to have a little, so that the board of supervisors has to discuss it, come up with a resolution.
Especially any future board.
Yep, and this is why you're expending that money, just like we did for the courthouse, Jake.
So um.
So let's take that, that hundred dot, let's put that, what does it turn out to be?
Hundred and.
Hundred twelve thousand?
Five, hundred and, well, fifteen really, if you got hundred and then you got from impact, which would be.
Ten.
Ten, oh yeah, ten, yep, ten and another ten, seven, so seven, cause we're reducing that down to, so yeah, hundred and seventeen somewhere in there.
Where'd I, I missed a ten somewhere.
Yeah, well, we reduced this general um county management down from seventeen five to ten.
That's where I missed another ten.
So a little over ten, a hundred thousand dollars.
Hundred and seventeen.
You have a hundred and seventeen.
It's kind of a unique number, so that'll trigger it with that.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Perfect.
Again, that's a budgeted transfer.
Right.
Has to, it requires resolution, and you guys decide if you wanna wait till the end of the fiscal year to do that or when, I mean, you'll have to just let me know, um let us know to go through that process.
Right. Good, thank you.
Is there any, is there any other lines?
No, I didn't, I didn't see anything else right now.
Making out, hundred and seventeen.
No, I think that's a, that's a good move.
It, it keeps those dollars in play. We know we're going to have more expenses related to the courthouse. And now we, we're gonna utilize those dollars instead of trying to pull them from someplace else.
Yeah, we would never code a claim to the um capital projects fund without.
Right.
Right.
Even though that doesn't require a transfer, but as opposed to a, a one-off that goes to department ninety-nine, I mean, just lands on your, that, that kinda
Exactly.
funnels to us.
Yes, cause you know Chris is gonna have stuff on that fourth floor of the chair, right Steve? So.
Well, yeah, um.
Don't know.
At some point, we're having, within the next year or two.
Fourth floor.
Fourth floor, yes.
Not the law library, okay. Ed's probably gonna, probably discuss that at his meeting.
Maybe.
So.
Good, I don't have anything else, Dave. Keesha, Steve?
No.
Alright. Jake, I assume you should now thank you for putting up with me?
No, just gotta, it just, we, we just need to be on the same page.
Well, that's what the meeting is for, to get on the same page.
Yeah.
I kinda missed what's happening at three o'clock.
Um so we're pulling all non-essential offices. I have, I do have Danny going up to clerk a court, um cause Kelly's email came back. So I, I messaged Danny to let them know at least that we were leaving the building.
Okay. Sorry.
You can take your chances at three as opposed to floor thirty.
It's always better to go in the daylight than the dark.
I sent all department heads an email, so I'm hoping that.
Yeah.
So, so I don't have anything else.
It's on Facebook, it's on camera.
For today.
For today?
Yep, and tomorrow we go at nine.
Yeah, nine, yeah.
And if something changes, let me know on how the, it's nine till, Mark said nine till they're done.
Till we're done. We're gonna finish it tomorrow.
Tomorrow's a big day, wrap it up. Jake, thank you for that. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make motion to adjourn.
Second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye, very good, we are adjourned, thank you.